So it would seem that things are getting a little more interesting here as we're approaching the final battles here, I guess, court-wise. Weird thing happened, as everybody knows, there's a no-contact order. And I have not violated that. I never even violated the trespass. All that was thrown on me without even set foot on the property. So, you know, I basically would go to work and home. Go to the store, come home. Go to the store, go to work, or go to work, go to the store, come home. You know, I had a YouTube channel up that pretty much covered daily everything, because we recorded everywhere. You don't see as much of that anymore, because, you know, all that evidence too, somebody kept reporting the channel until they got it gone. We've got a good idea who did that. But, you know, we still have video, and we're putting some of that back here as we can. Actually, we probably have two terabytes of video, and we're still, you know, every day doing stuff. But the weird thing that just happened a couple of days ago was, you know, after, you know, it was the first nice day we've had since all the cold. So, mother and I were out shooting targets, and when we got done, there was a ring-ring, or something, anyway. And sometimes I hear this stuff, sometimes I don't, I'm not really one to want to do any social media on a phone or anything like that. But it's on the phone, I mean, the Facebook thing is there. And the Messenger, apparently, there was two missed calls on the Messenger. And then there was a message, and it came from a school board member, that, of course, I know this person, and they used to, they were in my Facebook, but I deleted them. And I thought I had blocked them too, because didn't want to risk any contact by accident with anybody on that side of the fence. So, but it was weird, the message which you're about to see, you're about to see this, was asking me to call on an unrecorded line. This person's been going on about how the phones are tapped, you know, prior to anything, anyway. So, anyway, what you're about to see is, you'll see a couple of clips of that. And, well, did the CYA thing, called it in, seeing as how the town is doing this case against me, I went in and called the dispatch and asked them to have them come out. Of course, the property here at the corner is annexed into the town, and I was going to meet, I was told to meet them there. Well, sheriff's partner showed up first, and I was going to call them anyway, which was fine, because I wanted documented on both sides. And, but they were called instead of the town, so he called the town out. And you're going to see the officer that came out, and I let her know what it was, and wanted to get a report documenting this, that, you know, I was not, hadn't even opened up the message. Hadn't opened up nothing, or responded, and I wanted it to be, you know, on the record for that. Because I have not been going out of my way, you know. And then, you know, she went to get a notepad, and while she's back there at the back of her vehicle, I guess she makes a phone call to headquarters. Another officer ends up showing up from the town, and, you know, we got two town officers there, and then she instructs me that they will not do a report. And their excuse on this was because I am in the county. Okay, well, that's what I've been saying all along, that, yeah, I'm in the county, that's why I've been dealing with county on everything. But yet, the town could arrest me, and I've not been doing anything in town limits. The, you know, this is, you know, counties come out and talk to me about every issue that the town is trying to push against me. And after talking, they find out the truth of the matter, and they've told me, well, that makes sense, and then they would leave. But, you know, you got, you got officers here saying that they can't do a report, because it's not their jurisdiction, just like I've been saying all along, it's not their jurisdiction. So how the hell can they make it their jurisdiction? You know, it's starting to sound a little familiar, you know, it's sounding like something else too. I mean, basically, it shows that there's some wrongdoing on the other side of the fence, and I don't think they want to enforce that, they'd just rather cover it up. That's what it looks like, because that's the same thing the district was doing, they said that anything that happened off their property, they weren't concerned about. But then all of a sudden, they're concerned about it. They're concerned about it, all right, they're concerned about covering it up and going after the person complaining, because they don't want, they don't want to ruin the image of that school that they're making so much money on, and they're recruiting all these people, because everybody's connected to something. Everybody is connected to either the developments, you know, they're getting kickbacks off something, you know. And, and your taxes are fixing to go up, remember that bond? And in fact, they probably already started it, from what I understand, that bond, that has to be paid back, said taxes are going up. It is, you know, it's just an interesting thing, because all this started with, you know, trespassing on our property. And then it escalated. And once A.J. Blues got involved in it and was recording it, that seemed to make it even bigger gain for a lot of the kids, because they wanted to be on YouTube. I can think of no other reason why. Because I, I mean, they've, they've gone out of their way to follow me, they've showed up at my work, I mean, if I'm at the store, they see me, I mean, they come track me down. I mean, I'm not saying all the kids are doing something bad, though. I mean, some of them are coming up and actually thanking me for speaking up, they said it's helped them. They've had some bullies pushing them around. There's, there's some of that video still out there on YouTube, and I know that some of these kids that have come up that done this and thanked me when I didn't expect it. I mean, they were recording too, so I'm sure their video's out there. I'd love to get a copy of it. You know, feel free to send it to me. No, that is not a, a contact, I'm not contacting you. I don't know you, I mean, because the ones, the last ones that did it, I don't even know who they are. I don't even know if they are actually students, because they pulled up behind me at a gas station, blocked me a little bit, and started talking. I turned around, I could barely see, because the truck had tinted windows, the windows rolled down partially at first, and then they rolled it down all the way, and all I could see was a phone with a light on it, and the guy's talking. And I didn't recognize him, it had no markings, didn't have any parking decals for a school, so therefore, like I said, I don't know who these people are, they could be, you know, college kids that have siblings in the school, I don't know. If not, if you don't send it to me, which that's fine, you don't have to send it to me, send it to somebody that will do something with it, and then they can get it to me. Like Jerry Balloon at The Chronicle. You can send it to Wayne Floyd in West Columbia. That would be a good notion, you know, good way to do it, because this is actually part of a legal deal, anyway. Also, helped motivate me to get back in the, in the run for House of Representatives here, something that I focused on years ago, and allowed myself to be distracted and go all the way through with it. Because I really was hammering Rick Quinn pretty hard, digging up dirt on him. And it took how many years for that to get done? Just like whenever I was hammering Mets and going after Mets. And there's numerous other people, so, yeah, I'm sure there's some people out there that don't like me, but I think we're all a little bit better off for what always happens. This is another fight. This is, I mean, this is another fight, and something I thought I wouldn't be getting in again, excuse me, because I had pretty much retired out of this kind of scene. Stopped doing shows, stopped doing everything, left the, you know, the radio station's been running anyway, or will be seven years old, January 15th, which is Monday, I do believe. So, it's, you know, it's time to start rocking the mic again and really kicking some ass out there. So, all you people that knew me before, and knew how I was before, and before I got kind of mowed in my older age, you're going to see that guy again. And just hold on to your seat, folks, because it's about to get wild. Now, I'm going to go ahead and give you the, the snapshots here, it came up on two different things, came up on the phone and my computer, you'll be able to see who it is. And then you'll get to see the video where Town Lexington just refuses to do a report, but Lexington County did the report. And I have a copy of that, and Watch Fox has a copy of this as well. So anybody has any questions, they can always contact them as well. So, we'll get right to it right now. Thank you for your time and checking this out. A.J. Blues.
This is the first time we've called from the fan, and nothing against county, but the county shows her. And, well, what?
Yes, ma'am, that's kind of what I'm doing, they're kind of like...
Yeah. So who did that call the county?
Yes, ma'am. So, catch me up and listen, I have no idea what's going on.
All right, basically, for a couple of years, we've had problems with school. And every time we get something out there and start getting something done, the school turns around like, 2016, I talked to them, asked them to help out, they wouldn't do nothing. I report the fact that kids have been trespassing and all that, they put me on trespass notice for school property. I don't even go there, except to vote. This year, it starts up all over again, I mean, they got nasty. She just got diagnosed with cancer, and she was going through treatments, and these kids just constantly coming through.
Crazy.
And it got to the point, and, and see, I'm, I have an internet show that's seven years old this weekend, and I post some things, but some of the things that was, that they said I did, wasn't actually so. There was no direct threats of nothing. They use that to, a one-time thing that was said on there, which I found out too, that they've hijacked my website, nobody's done anything about that, kids took over my website. And they, they were getting in on my damn Twitter, which I don't care for Twitter any damn way, but, and while I was in jail, Twitter was still posting. So I'm like, okay, doesn't that show you something? But, no, they, I mean, they arrested me for unlawful communication. And it said it happened on their, and I ain't been over there. So, I mean, you know, and, and they, they put this monitor system on me, which basically shows where I go any damn way, I don't go there. And they put the, all these restrictions, I'm not supposed to be anywhere where kids gather, or anything like that, can't go to a movie, can't go to a park, can't, I mean, they put all, a ton of restrictions, no contact order with anybody in the district. And that's why, when a school board member sends me a message and has tried to call me twice, right before I'm having to go to court?
Yes, sir.
Sounds a little fishy, want me to call them back on an unrecorded line? I'm just CYA.
Oh, yes, sir, I don't blame you on that one.
And see, that's the whole thing too, I've been videoing out here and catching all this stuff. We caught, after I got out of jail, they was still coming over here. If I was such a dangerous person, why do they keep coming over here to my house?
Yes, sir.
I called county four times on a, on one particular Friday night, had them out here for the same kids. They come back again. And while I was on the phone with dispatch, I was out there, and we was out target shooting. We shoot bows and arrows, and I have a crossbow out. And they was going by while I was on, and said, why can't y'all just leave us alone? I was still on the phone with dispatch, they heard me say it. Well, they turned around later, and they come back, and apparently, they called y'all. And then they said that I was chasing around the store with a crossbow, then they said I was standing at the corner over there with a crossbow, then they finally admitted I never left the property. That's what finally got them arrested.
Yes, sir.
Two brothers, and they're, they didn't arrest them on the false report, but they got them for, because I got a stack of reports, and I got video of them with the town as well as county, talking to the officers, being told, leave me alone, on more than one occasion. And they kept doing it, so they got charged with harassment first degree, both kids. And after that, it got quiet out here, finally.
I guess, sir. What are they doing, just covering up your property?
They would come over here, mhm.
They, back and forth in front of the house.
Cussing at us, hollering.
Blowing the horn, we already had that while we were out here waiting.
In fact, you just missed one of the, their group, he's in a red Nissan Titan, we've reported him a few times, and he went that way.
We were waiting here, and he blew the horn going all the way up the road.
He's a bunch of high schoolers.
Yeah. Kids, is all it is, the parents don't do anything.
And so the only reason I went...
That's if they're even being notified by the...
They've tried to run her over out here, they've tried to run my stepdad over, somebody come by shooting a pistol.
Did it hit anything, or?
No. We reported it, had a detective come out and look, but couldn't see evidence of anything.
Yes, ma'am.
And I couldn't tell you what they were driving, or anything, I was sitting on front porch, I wasn't...
I was at work.
I wasn't paying that close to catching them there.
Yes, ma'am.
His brother, his oldest, his brother's the oldest, he's special needs, and he loves to sit out and watch crack. And that's what we were doing, because it was summer, you know, nice weather, so that's what we were doing. And that's when that happened. My husband called it better than I did, because he was out in the yard picking up branches and stuff to go out to tree.
Yes, ma'am.
Now see, they, they started up some stuff and ended up getting my stepdad arrested through the county.
But they kept trespassing, and he went over, he told him he would stay the hell off my property, and they got him for...
Assault and Battery Three. There's town passing by.
He still got to go to court. On that, this month.
Monday, I think.
Sixteenth. It's Tuesday.
Today's the night, so...
Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
It's coming Tuesday.
Trying to get the thing to just come out of that room. I went to turn in, and then I had to, I passed it.
Well, they knew they could have come in that drive, it ain't blocked yet.
As long as Joel's open, he'll be walking the drive. But whenever he closes, everybody's gone, we barricade the post, that's our property, don't go outside that door. And we don't want people coming on our property.
They're lost, they're just sitting there. I think it might be a sheep.
What in the world are you wearing?
You smell in the car.
It'd be hard work, because I've been running the front off all day.
Joel probably wondering what's going on in all this area over that property. But we're trying to keep it away from Hook, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
We sure won't sell.
Is that my buddy? I got one that moved down from Alaska, well, she went to college here from Alaska. Nope, hey! Upside down all around? I tried to get Bledsoe on the phone, or...
Other ways, maybe, what's going on?
I tried to get Bledsoe on the phone, because he's a detective on the case, and I could have called Lee, but I don't know if he would, I would have called him either, because I tried to text him earlier. Chris Rains, A.J. Blues.
Yes, sir, what's going on?
No contact order between me and the school district, you're aware of that?
Okay.
They made a big deal about it. I've been contacted by a person from the school district wanting me to contact them. I want to make a report on that, so I know.
Who was it?
Grady Harmon.
Okay, um, let me grab a, where were you when he called you?
We were outside shooting targets, I'm, probably didn't hear it, when I went in the house, that's whenever I heard a ding-ding after that, and that's whenever he was, I figured, it went through Facebook Messenger.
Okay.
So it wasn't through my phone, but it says Facebook.
Okay, I got you.
And it, you know, you can phone call on there, and you can do the message thing, apparently.
Let me grab a notepad real quick, because I just ran over from eating, actually, so let me grab that real quick, and I'll be right back.
All right.
Like I said, I had no clue what was going on.
Ask Major Jones, he'll take you.
It's a new deputy who has no idea what's going on, but every time we turn around, we're having to root this one.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm working on an actual presentation, that I'll just say, watch this first, knock on the door when you're done.
That would make it easier.
I mean, why is it that they don't go and leave y'all in one spot to go and get familiarity with the area of people?
Oh, we, we do, at least on my shift, we do.
Not here!
On my shift, we do, I'm originally new here.
Yeah.
I started back there, started in Lexington County in October, I worked seven years, that's it, so.
Elsewhere?
Newbury County.
Newbury, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, then I was in P. D. M. Park.
You live in this area?
This area.
Airborne.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
Well, you can't vote for me, then, I'm running for the State House.
Okay, I, I...
Hey, there's another one.
Mama actually seems cool in the middle.
Isn't that, is that what you call him?
Damn, I'm getting two towns.
I got him...
Who you got coming? Who else you got coming? They got two.
Just me.
He's plenty, look at him, he ain't no little thing.
That's all we, only unless it's bad, that's all, that's all we do.
You're trying to say it takes two towns to do the job of one deputy?
He's little, he's good, he doesn't need them.
Oh, I do need them, sometimes.
Right, hey, I need y'all.
Sometimes I need them.
Now, I got video of them following me around, from home to work and back, they followed other people that, friends of mine, they followed other family members.
I followed his friend on a motor, on his bumper truck, bright light, glowing horn, and doing all of that, scared the hell out of me. What is it, 23?
Yeah, I guess.
And, I swear, the kid's naive as hell, so this just, it just scared him.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
So what I wanted to double check on, just to make sure I'm not crazy, since you're home, that's in the county, right?
Right.
So they would have to file a report for you.
Okay, the only reason I wanted to get you all involved, because Bledsoe is on the case, and this is involving the town on that.
And I can let him know.
Yeah.
But they'll have to actually file a report for you.
Okay.
But I can let him know as soon as I leave here and shoot email.
So then I got to go find the paper for you.
So as you can see, well, he can just meet us at the house.
Whatever, I mean, whoever sees this, you know...
You can do that, yeah.
I can, I can go ahead and do a report for you tomorrow.
Okay, I didn't know, you know, I didn't want to step on toes with county or whatever.
Well, yeah, because, well, I was going to call them too, and then he showed up, so dispatch sent him anyway.
Right, well, because that's where your address happens from.
Yeah, but the fact that, well, see...
He's trying to cover his butt, because it is a town thing.
Right, I understand.
And court's coming up in a few weeks.
So, what I can do is I'll just go ahead and shoot Lieutenant Bledsoe an email.
Right.
And that way, I'll notify him, so he'll know, okay?
I have a screenshot of it on my phone, is there a way I can send it to, do you have something I can send it to?
Um, you maybe can send it to him, I don't, I don't know who you can deal with.
I don't have his cell number, I do have...
Email, email's always a good option.
I don't have email.
You don't have email?
I got email, just switching it over to that, I don't do email on this thing. Lee?
Okay.
I have his cell, I don't know, I've tried texting him, but he's not been responding today.
I'm not sure if he's in today.
Okay.
So what I would do is maybe in the morning, when we get back up at eight, just go ahead and call him in, and either talk to Lieutenant Bledsoe or propose to you.
Well, at that point, I may just come down in person and bring it.
You guys can kind of set something up and show, you know, show him whatever.
Yeah, I'd like something.
Whatever you need to see, okay?
Okay.
Anything else I can do for you guys?
That's, that's it, like I said, it's a CYA issue, it just sounds like a setup, you know?
Well, just ignore it, it's definitely the best you can do, and then report it, so...
Okay.
Um, if you guys need anything else, tell us, okay?
All right, thank you, and...
All right, what's your name?
Chris Rains.
What's your last name for?
R-A-I-N-E-S.
Chris or Christopher?
Chris is fine.
Well, I gotta put your full name in.
Oh, Christopher, sorry.
What's your daddy's birthday?
10-3-74, Nima I.D.
That makes it a little easy.
Yeah, let me get that out for you.
While you're doing that, what's your phone number for you? 6019? It's 512-8, those streams, good address for you? And what was his name?
Who? Oh, Grady Harmon, sorry.
All right, I have a little report typed up, where you can pick it up after 2:00 in the morning.
Uh, do you want a copy of this to add to the report?
I can't...
I have a screenshot, I can probably pull it off.
I can't add anything to the report on our, on our system?
Or print off a copy for, for record?
Ours goes, our, our, sorry, ours are all electronic.
Okay, I just know we've been turning in pictures and footage of other things.
Yes, sir, was that through the city?
No, through county.
No, to the county.
Yeah, they've been adding that as evidence, and this is, this is kind of evidence on that, and I don't want to lose it.
Hold on to it, can back it up on another phone, back it up in, what, is that Samsung?
Yes.
Back it up onto, if you have any external drives?
I got it, because I'm the one that took the picture of it.
Okay.
And then I sent it to him, so that he would have it.
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of hard to take a picture of it on your own phone.
I mean, I, I got the case, and I rang, sent it to J.J.
You can do a screenshot.
And he may be able to go ahead and do that.
But you still got it. Oh, what the hell?
Yes, ma'am, I, I'll say this, with, with, the way our system was kind of set up, it's kind of hard for us to turn in, pay for coffee, move some stuff, for evidence.
Oh, Lord, we've been doing it.
Well, have you been talking to an investigator, or someone like that, or is it all...
Well, on, well, county, well, there's three cases.
Okay.
And there's so, there's quite a few different investigators that have gotten involved, but there's certain ones that are staying on. Like my case with the town, the detective or lieutenant that's against me is Bledsoe. Doug Lee is one that I have been working with on the flip side, where we've had to file reports against some of the people involved.
Okay.
Um, that's with the town. As far as the county, you got Jay Bonnet, and then you got Rawl, Miles Rawl, and then J.J. Jones has been aware of everything going on, too.
Okay, and, because this affects your bond that you have with the city, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I always say, any kind of contact like that, that can revoke it and cause... And I, I say any kind of contact like that, that can revoke it and cause me a problem or, and maybe even ruin my case.
Yes, sir. What? Because it's going to get turned over to the city, um, more than likely because it'll go in basically third file for their evidence. Again, I'll say that it's going to get, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure it's going to get turned over, this report's going to get turned over to the city so they can, you know, have it for, because you said that has to do with them.
Yes. I mean, yes, they're against me, but I want to cover my ass.
Yes, sir. And, uh, what they'll be able to do is they'll be able to, the city will be able to request a copy. You can come up and request a copy as well. And that way you can present it and say, hey, here's this. Show the officer where he contacted me on my phone here. And I'm having there that I observed that you had four Facebook messages from him. Without a response. So.
Okay.
Um, you know, that, that'll be probably the best way to handle it because like I said, it'll probably will be turned over to the city.
And they're already getting kind of screwed with their court dates. They don't even know what they're doing. And I've talked to them. They sent me two different letters on that. And it's like they're eliminating one part of court. And I'm like.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I noticed that the attorney, they had an attorney, a law firm listed at the bottom of the latest letter, which is involved with those kids that got arrested. Is they, they put the law firm, uh, they lawyered up for the youngest child and he was the one that they said was assaulted. So this is all getting connected, is all connected, even though they've been trying to say different, but it's all connected.
And that one we got from our husband.
Yes, ma'am.
And then of course the after hour liquor sales. That hadn't been thrown in there yet.
But, uh, yeah, that, that would be my suggestion. Because I have no way to take something from your phone or PDF.
I'll show you how y'all, how they've been doing it.
How they've been doing it?
They've been taking my thumb drive, putting it on their, uh, laptop and pulling it.
Okay. I'll, I'll say that I'm not, we're not supposed to do that. The IT guys would freak if we did do that.
These are the ones that's been around a lot longer than that.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So I don't know. I guess they figure they can get away with it. Who knows?
Maybe so.
I can understand you not wanting to rock your boat.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I really do.
I, I had, I had a flash drive yesterday that I found and I was like, oh, you know, let's find out what's on there. My foreman grabbed my hand when I was about to plug it in and he was like, uh-uh.
Oh, they were, they were keeping my flash drives there for long as now. It's like, I tell them, I said, look, man, I'm running out of flash drives. Can you pull it off? And so they've been pulling it off.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, um. Because it, this is going to have to do with the city case, which is why I'm kind of surprised that they didn't want to take the report.
I'm not surprised.
Well. But.
It's whose hands getting buttered?
Well. But since it's probably going to get turned over to the city, I hold on to it and we'll use that as, uh, you know, when you go to court.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You be safe.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Y'all have a good night.
You ain't doing the night shift. You fixing to get off, so.
Maybe. I had a whole bunch of reports today, so I might be typing for next couple hours.
At least you'd be out of the way. You too.
The Hubble Radio Station everyone loves.
I love them a lot.
Backstage with A.J. Blues, your local music connection.